Great, good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to this conversation about is education ready for AI? My name is Mina Al-Arabi. I'm the editor of The National and a young global leader, and I'm delighted to be leading this conversation. We're just getting used to our setting. It's not a usual setting for a session discussion at the World Economic Forum, but it's wonderful to be here, here in Riyadh. So we have 45 minutes to tackle a really important topic, education, always important, but of course, the trend of AI. So of course, AI is already transforming our world and more to come. Our speakers will be talking about much of what we are thinking when it comes to the transformation of education, the opportunities, but also the challenges. Three key areas to tackle is the global teacher gap. It is an issue that many people in education systems are concerned about. UNESCO says 44 million additional teachers will be needed by 2030. Now, what seems to be the current agreement amongst all sides is you don't want to replace teachers, you want to enable teachers, you want to empower teachers. Second is this idea of administrative tasks that can be at least condensed by the use of AI. OECD lower secondary, lower school secondary teachers have said that 44% of their time is actually put to teaching, and everything else is admin and other tasks and assessments. So AI can also be seen as opportunity there. And then there's the digital skills gap, a big challenge in different communities across the world. And I don't think anybody has figured it out. Different countries and industries are tackling it. So how can teaching with and about AI change that? Today, the World Economic Forum is publishing a report called "Shaping the Future of Learning: The Role of AI in Education 4.0." So I highly recommend that you, that you get a copy of that, and it sheds a light on many of these issues. To take on this conversation, we have at the very end of the table Laura Frejetti, who is CEO of the Global Partnership for Education. Next to her is Minister of Education from Rwanda, Gaspar Togir Teyizu. And then we have Jack Azaguri, who is the Group Chief Executive of Strategy and Consulting for Accenture. And then Dima Al-Yahya, Secretary General for Digital Cooperation Organization. And right near me here is Urdeena Abdul, founder and CEO of Zeki. So, Mr. Gaspar, if I can please start with you, how do you see the transformation of education with AI's development? And if you can give us some of the examples of how you see that in Rwanda at the moment, it would be great.
Thank you very much. And this is a very important conversation that we are having. And if you look at all the conversations that are happening here, most of them are focusing on AI and how do you improve productivity with AI? And you can see that AI has potential to increase productivity across all the sectors. And education, of course, should not be left behind. And in fact, if AI is not properly streamlined in education, these productivity gains may not happen in all the other sectors. Because of course, the education sector is in charge of producing the skills. And if those skills, if the students or the products of education are not properly trained and are not, did not take good opportunity of AI, then these problems will keep coming back into being circular issues. So education, the question around this panel, is education ready for AI? The short answer is yes, but the long discussion will be on how. So what we have been seeing as some of these potential examples of how AI could revolutionize education, and you kind of mentioned about it, on this shortage of teachers. Of course, AI and technology are not going to replace teachers. But again, as you said, we can make sure that teachers are properly educated. Here we are trying to talk about how AI can help in producing education materials for the teachers or training materials for the teachers, so that we do not have all these expensive training sessions that we all have to go, to go through. So teachers can be enabled to learn on their own using AI, and AI can facilitate that. And of course, AI is not going to replace teachers, but we can augment their practice in the classrooms. So you talked about how we can eliminate these repetitive tasks that the teachers have to go through, whether it's through grading, whether it's through managing the classrooms. So we see also a huge potential of AI around, around that. And of course, we also see opportunities around personalized learning. So this is something that has been talked about for a while. So, but we also think that AI also has potential to assess the ability of individual students and then be able to customize content that the students can learn that way. And another big opportunity that we see on AI, of course, is around equity. So, and how, how is that? So you will see that there is a big gap between the students' achievements, whether they are in rural or urban areas. And, but if you think about technology, if you think about access to content, technology has the potential to provide the same content to all the students, whether they are in cities or in the rural areas. So technology and AI in general has also the potential to be a great equalizer in that sense. So we think this is also something that we can capitalize on. So, and of course, this cannot happen if education systems or the education leaders do not think differently. So AI, therefore, is not something to fight in education. It's something to embrace. But how we embrace it is going to make a lot of a difference.
So you're at the helm of an education system in Rwanda. I mean, how do you, how do you see that? The ability to embrace AI at the moment in your country?
So in Rwanda, what we have, the efforts of our education system are part of the overall plan for the government of Rwanda to embrace technology and make technology an enabler of our transformation. So we started many years ago by putting in place conducive policies for technology. And then we started building infrastructure around, around the country. And now internet coverage is almost the entire country. And if you look at how internet penetration in schools has been, we are now almost at where we are connecting all the schools. So we have now a very big project on building a dedicated network for all the schools and the research networks around the country. So in this is to ensure that our students have access to information, the teachers have access to information that they can use in the classroom. So this is in preparing our schools to be future-ready. So we have also, of course, investing in making sure that our students have the right type of content. And we have digitized all the content that we have in our education system. And we have been working to make sure that this, the delivery of that content is as smart as possible, so that our students and teachers can take a very good advantage of that. And another thing that we worked on was to digitize the entire system itself. So how we recruit teachers, we have digitized the whole process from end to end, teach us how they are recruited, how they are trained, and how they are managed, how they are also transferred between, between posts. So we have also digitized assessments. So meaning that we are producing a lot of data around assessments. Our students take what we call comprehensive assessment, and this is an assessment that's nationally benchmarked, so that we can be able to compare how our students are doing. And all of this is, this is digitized. So this is to ensure that we have data. And then later on, we are now using this technology that we are talking about here to now make sure that we get the right insights from those sets of data. Are our students doing better? And if they are doing better, why? And what can we do to make sure that we keep, we keep improving? So there are many examples of what we have been doing to ensure that we build that base. So, but again, the challenge, it's not only in Rwanda, but also elsewhere, is to ensure that we cover all the basics, but also at the same time, make sure that we are working on these transformational issues. So maybe over the course of this discussion, also here, from what other people think, but this is going to be a challenge, that education systems are going to, to be working on. How do we ensure that we cover all these technical issues in education to make sure that kids go to school, that they go to the right schools, that they have the right teachers, the right teaching and learning materials, but also at the same time, think about the future of education? And these are not the things that we can do sequentially. So these are the things that we will need to make sure that we do in parallel, but do it responsibly.
Thank you very much. Well, you spoke about digital transfer, I mean, you spoke about many important points, but the digital transformation, putting in the right infrastructure, data sets. And Dima, that makes me think immediately to come to you, because you've helped through DCO advance digital transformation in over 16 countries. And of course, education is at the heart of thinking about digital transformation. So how do you foresee the opportunities, but also the challenges, in ensuring that that digital transformation touches upon education in the right way, but also ensures equitable access?
Amazing, thank you so much for that question, actually, because just listening to His Excellency the Minister that showcases huge potential of using AI. Again, a technology is a tool, it's as good as you use it. And therefore, you can unlock a lot of great opportunities to, to help and support in efficiency, as well as accuracy and quality of learning as well. But there is a pressing challenge that always comes to mind, which is having that tool or that amazing tool that can enable that potential of growth. Who can use that technology? When we have 2.7% of the population unconnected, they're not even on the grid. They don't even have basic connectivity and internet. So here is where we look specifically in DCO at computing power and computing capacity. Where is that computing gap? How can we make sure that our countries and nations have the infrastructure that will enable them to not just provide these types of technologies to our, to our nations, but also to grow and the, the local content of that, of these nations? We've been working a lot with private sector and nations to create, to measure that gap. If we look at the 16 countries that we represent right now, two only from these countries have supercomputers. We see acceleration, a lot of acceleration when it comes to upskilling and learning. Rwanda is an amazing, an amazing role model when it comes to human capital development as well. And we see that the more synergies and the more that we have collaborative initiatives together, we can come up with a pool of talent that can be exchanged between nations and therefore can expedite that, that growth and bridging that computing divide between countries. Not only looking at the computing power, but we look also at devices and the availability of devices to schools. Are students equipped with devices right now that will enable them to use that technology? And this is also a factor where we're looking into some of our member countries that already started manufacturing low-cost devices, which is from $60 to $90 per device, and see how can we make it available for the nations that need those low, low, low-cost devices? And then comes the applications. Now, how can we provide the right infrastructure? And as His Excellency mentioned, like center of excellences that enables that technology and capability, not only for that nation, but other nations around, to come up with new innovations and come up with new local content that can grow to become ventures and new technologies that enable the education system? We, we saw that in COVID. In COVID, the options were limited for edu-tech solutions. And we can't have that, we can't, we can't see that again. We have to make sure that we're creating local content. We cannot create local content without enabling innovation and talents to use that technology. And this is where comes the, as DCO, we are looking at how can we create an environment that facilitates that communication between private sector and also private sector and public sector to create, to accelerate the growth of digital economy by enabling technologies like AI, but not only to countries that can, but we want to, we don't want to leave anyone behind. And therefore, we want to enable prosperity for all.
Something that I heard this morning was we've been thinking about digital transformation. A lot of it has been about, again, thinking digital, but now we're thinking smart. So the AI process changes exactly as you pointed out. There's the issue of devices, there's the issue of, you know, what data sets are available. And then you add this whole new layer of artificial intelligence. And so how prepared are countries? I mean, again, from the countries, the 16 countries that you're working with, how much are they thinking about AI? Or are they still at the point of, we still need the basics? Let's get, let's get the basics right.
We see that diversity, actually. You know, the level is, is not balanced. And this is where we are educating our members and is what is the must-have and then what's the, the nice-to-have. And what's really beautiful is that we're bringing in these synergies, what the most mature or advanced countries are actually supporting and helping other countries that are not there yet. And this is where there's dialogues happening. We just launched in our General Assembly the Gen AI Center of Excellence that will be based in three countries and that will enable the other countries around them. Also, the AI toolkit as well, which is the starting point, not only from infrastructure, but also policy and regulation recommendations, as well as human capital development programs that are from other countries to, to support. So there, they, I wouldn't say that all of them are in the same level when it comes to maturity, but there are a level of maturity where best practices are being shared between the nations.
So I will be opening the floor for questions, and there will be a roving mic coming, but I want to give each of our speakers a chance to answer my questions, and then we'll turn to you. So please keep your questions in mind. Urdeena, I want to turn to you, because as Dima just highlighted, different countries, but also within countries, there are different opportunities and lack of for different communities. You at Zeki are thinking about vulnerable communities. And you can tell us a bit more about the work that you do, but this idea of vulnerable students and children, refugee displaced children, you know, how can AI-driven solutions actually help them? And often people talk about leapfrogging, so you can create new opportunities, especially when there aren't enough teachers to go around. Can AI be a solution for inclusivity?
Thank you for that question. And first, let me please start by putting the context within which we work, within these communities, where maybe there is internet connectivity. And when there is internet connectivity, it could be 3G, it could be spotty. So you can't do the kind of streaming and accessing to enable the power that AI needs. So in context, and this, you know, 2.4 billion people in the world are not connected, and the disparity is huge. We're talking 27% in low-income countries. So within this context, you are, we're working within areas that have either no internet, so you have to address offline capabilities. And when there are resources available, it's mostly through phones. And there could be computer labs, which is what we do, is we put those in. But they're shared resources. So just to set that context, what can AI do? I think the, working with open educational resources, so resources that are free and accessible to communities that may not be able to tap into tools that need the high power, the high skills in order to use them. Low-tech alternatives. So how can these phones utilize AI-driven tools? And how can they be adapted to that technology? And I think it's also important to address the multilinguality part of it. And I think a huge point is the bias. And I don't know if we want to get into this now.
Sure, I think we should.
But the whole bias against data exclusion. These communities are not included, are not being accessed online, and their voices are not heard. And the whole AI system is also excluding those. So that's just increasing that bias, and that's increasing the rift in this, in this inequity that I think we should be extremely mindful of.
So how do we solve for that, in addition to being mindful of it?
A, how can we get internet connectivity? So whether it's through satellite, or how can we get that? But the offline, how can we get AI to address offline and hybrid? So where we work, there is, it's offline. But occasionally, there are online abilities to, to get data thrown into the system online. So how can we get better at that? And to my knowledge, and I'm not an AI expert, offline capabilities are still lagging. So I think we need to start giving that more attention.
Great. Laura, at Global Partnerships for Education, I mean, you're, you help countries build stronger education systems. So as we see AI, everything from generative AI, concerns about plagiarism, but also how it will equip young people to learn in a way none of us, I think, in this room, actually, no, I know, not I think, I know, none of us in this room ever learned that way. How do you prepare, especially when the, the speed of change with technology is so fast, it's, it's almost impossible to plan for? What's your advice to these countries you're working with?
So let me just maybe give you like three numbers to kind of set the context of what the situation is in the countries where we work. We work in countries where generally, on average, 10 children share one textbook at the moment. We work in countries where often there are 100 children in one classroom for one teacher. And in countries where at the end of grade four, seven children out of 10 do not know how to read or write a very simple sentence. So this is the baseline. Now, obviously, one has several options. The first one is let the traditional education system do its course, and then hopefully it will catch up. I strongly advise against it, because that is just going to create a much bigger gap between a part of the world that can invest $8,000 per child per year on education and a part of the world that barely manages to invest $80. And that is going to create all sorts of socioeconomic disparities, inequalities within society, inequalities between the global north and the global south. So the way in which I try to encourage the conversation between private sector, government, and other actors is let's move away from the idea of products. There is not a kind of a one-size-fits-all technology that you can just import into one particular country. You have to start from the condition of that country and think in terms of solution. What is what that country needs to be able to improve in a way that is organic, if we can say, in terms of growth, but that will allow them to really catch up, considering how fast the labor market is changing at the moment? And therefore, the requirements in terms of the skills that the education system produce needs to catch up really rapidly. So that is a little bit one of the way in which we help them thinking. So we integrate the improvement that technology and AI can add to the way in which the sector performs or is managed to a bigger way of thinking about the sector needs to transform, which includes a lot, changing the curriculum, thinking about what you have to do for the problem, the problem that you raised in your opening remarks. Teachers is the biggest problem at the moment for the education sector in low and middle-income country, and I would say also in some high-income country that we don't cover, but that I observe. So all this, there is great potential, but somehow it really needs to be seen in a kind of a more integrated way than what it is now. Lots of people, when I talk, they think that it would be sufficient to just put the tablet in the hand of a child and that they will have access to unlimited information and therefore, you know, solve all the problems about the low quality of education. It's just not going to happen like that.
It's, it's an important point to raise, this idea of you can't just give a tablet, you know, if only we got the connectivity or if we got enough tablets, then it would work out. I mean, and something that Dima said is also being relevant to the culture, to the country, to the community that education is there. So where do we see the opportunities with AI? Where do you see that AI could help with that? Especially the contextualization part?
Well, I do see a great opportunities on teachers. And let me just say, for example, that at the moment, we have, I mean, the vast majority of teachers in low and middle-income countries are not adequately trained. They cannot be pulled out of the school to actually give them a kind of a more formal training, because we are trying to make a very strong push to make sure that those 220 million children that are at the moment out of school get enrolled. And so actually, the ratio between the students and the teacher is going to grow. So you need to keep them in class. At the same time, there are things that are particularly complex for them to actually, you know, acquire in terms of knowledge through in-service training. I think at all the STEM agenda, science, technology, mathematics, et cetera, et cetera. So really, I like to see an integration between what the teacher in presence offers to the children on a certain set of topics, and then to have really the use of technology as something that supplement and complement the skills that the teacher doesn't have, and at the same time, is a tool for the teacher to be trained fast. And then the other thing, and I think you were also touching on this in your opening points, is the management of the school. We always think about the education system mainly in terms of what's happening in the classroom. The reality is that a lot of inefficiency in the sector are related to how the school and the system is managed. So that is where really I would see a very easy, low-hanging fruit.
Thank you. There are so many elements connected to education. So we're totally shifting gears now from, you know, primary education or schools, where, I mean, it's staggering, this idea of 10 children to one textbook. Just thinking, and Jack, I'll come to you here, thinking about lifelong learning, the role of corporate sector, and ensuring that, again, people, again, like many of us in the room, who can continue their education, how AI enables that? So flipping it to the other side of the education thinking or model.
Yeah, so, so as you said, I'm going to talk a little bit about what happens beyond when you graduate from high school or university and get into the corporate world, and share a little bit of the research we've done on the impact of AI and the need for training in the corporate world. The first thing is we do an assessment of forces of change every year just before the World Economic Forum in January, the one with snow. And this one we released, and the two top forces of change, we look at geopolitics, we look at health, we look at consumer behavior, we look at various things. Technology and people and talent, the two top forces of change. We then did some analysis. We looked at 900 jobs, 19,000 tasks in the corporate world to assess what is the impact of AI on those jobs. And so far, and I think this number will go up as AI and the strength of AI in these LLMs increases exponentially, but 44% of all jobs will be impacted, augmented, or maybe displaced and other jobs created. And don't get me wrong, we're positive about the long-term impact of AI on job creation. But it is a dramatic, dramatic impact that it, that it will have. The next, the third fact that I'll share is we see still a gap in organizations, a disconnect. 94% of employees in our research want extensive tech, data, and AI education. Only 5% of companies are really providing end-to-end training and education. Two-thirds of CXOs say they are ill-equipped to manage this transition with AI. Almost 60% of employees feel nervous and insecure about the impact. And when we look at the top worries of the C-suite, skill, skills and retraining of their employees is at the top of the list. So we have a background here where there's a dramatic shift that needs to be made. And we see this as a period of retraining and re-skilling unlike any one we've seen before. I will tell you, as a company, we have trained over the last two years 600,000 of our employees in AI, and in the last year, 250,000 of our 740,000 in Gen AI. So when we look at this, companies need to become talent creators, not just talent consumers. I believe it's not just an obligation, and we can debate that, but it is a matter of competitiveness. It is a must, they have to become talent creators. For one, they will not get the right employees if they don't focus on that. And for two, they will be uncompetitive. We believe companies are going to have to have a much better understanding of their skills. What skills do all, if you have 100 employees or 10,000 employees or 100,000 employees, what skills do your employees have? Where are they today? Because if your jobs are going to change, if the profile of the work you do is going to change, if you don't know where your employees are, how do you get them to where they need to be? The third, the next thing is when we look at AI itself, and there's been many studies, including one by MIT, if you give somebody AI and Gen AI versus you give them AI and Gen AI with training and education, the performance of those who get trained is much higher, right? Some people think that Some people think that prompting is the same as a Google search. It's not. You actually have to learn how to be good at prompting to leverage the power of technology. How do you interact with the model? How do you understand, you know, what LLM to use for which application? Different LLMs will give you different answers for different topics. They will have more precision in certain areas. How do you need to understand the technology to fully leverage it? And the last thing I will say is one of the things AI is going to be able to do is hyper personalized learning. I believe it will be even better than getting a personal coach. We know in education, people have, who have the luxury of having personal, more personalized training, do better. I believe AI will be better than personalized coach. The demand for this in our clients has been tremendous. We actually, in September, decided to launch a business which was just an app called LearnVantage around education and corporate AI based learning. But when you have an AI engine that knows what you've worked on, what you're going to be working on, what articles you've read, what training you've taken, how you learn, do you have any, you know, we all learn different ways. The AI agent will be by your side, learning your, how you learn, what you need to learn, what you've learned. And focus the, the learning in a way that, you know, is going to dramatically improve learning adoption and the quality of the learning. And so I am optimistic around the impact of AI. But I do think in the corporate world, there's a lot of work to do. And I will share the concern about the digital divide that my fellow panelists have talked about multiple times. You know, without an internet connection, Gen AI is not going to help. And we know Gen AI is going to uplift a lot of people. But we have to find a way to get Gen AI to uplift everyone. And without the foundation of connectivity and compute, you know, we're going to have a big issue. And with over 2 billion people, as my panel, my two panelists said, that is a big problem. And in corporate, public and private, have to help solve that issue.
So I want to, I want to open the floor. But one point, Jack, that you, that you mentioned is personalization hugely important, especially for how people learn from children through to older age. And it's quite interesting, in the UAE, they're, they're piloting something. The Minister of Education actually was discussing this in Davos, how they are piloting tutors for students depending on how the student learns. So everybody needs to do their, you know, five times table. But some students will learn perfectly with visuals. Others need to be taught, you know, through verbal and so forth. So this idea is as you learn more about each individual, you can personalize. Does anybody have a question that they would like to ask? And if there's a particular panelist you wish to pose the question to? Otherwise, we will continue our discussion. Ah, yes, please, gentleman here. Please, if you don't mind identifying yourself, and the mic's right there.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. Thank you very much for a great discussion. My name is Sirif Abdurrazz, and I'm from Jordan. I'm a global shopper from Amman Hub. My question is very much focused on trying to understand how with the amplification of access to resources, how important is resourcefulness? Especially with the emergence of technology in the sense of microchips going straight into our heads, you know? And how is that in parallel to robotics and the development of robotics? Are we going to spend more time on work, on working hours? Or less time? Thank you very much.
Dima, do you want to tackle that?
Okay.
You're the digital transformation person.
Well, thank you for that question. It's a very forward thinking and foresight question. And I hope I can, I can cover that. But from my perspective, I see that if we're looking at the, again, the more resources we have, it's, the technology is as good as we use it. So, and that's what I, in, in simple sentence, like ChatGPT, if you don't put in the right question, you will not get the right answer. So we have to start educating our, our children and also ourselves on how to write the right question. And that gets us to, do we have the powers of analyzing the challenge that we're facing that we need the solution for? Do we know how to analyze it? Do we know exactly what we need? Do we know, do we know the requirements that we have to look for to get the right result? So this is where, as much resources we have, if we don't know how to use the technology the right way and how, looking at it from a way that how is it going to serve you? And how is it going to help you in achieving your goals and the impact that you want to achieve? Then as much as you have, it's not going to help. In, in terms of the, looking at the chips and, and that, that I see it exciting time, but a lot see it also as a, as a challenging and frightening time. Is that if we look at it from a way of helping disabilities and knowing exactly where is the challenge? Now we look, we see we're facing a lot of mental health challenges that challenge students in learning and challenge students in, in getting the right education and growth and us as, in the workforce as well. And I think these chips, the more that we can collect data and understand exactly what is the cause of the problem, what is the challenges that we're facing, we can come up with the right solutions that can increase our productivity. So I always look, say, let's look at the positive, the positivity of these technologies that will enable us to do so much more. Now, looking at the, in terms of the robotics, I always see these new emerging technologies, especially AI. Although AI has been started since the 60s, it's not a new technology. But the evolvement of the, of the technology always gives us an opportunity to move the quality of workers from blue collar jobs to white collar jobs. And that always provides opportunities for growth. And where humans are positioned in jobs that actually are made for, which is made for using our brains more and using our intellect more. And this is where we're creating machines and robots and new technologies that can fulfill the blue collar jobs. Of course, in that process of transformation and change, there is going to be a drop where we will see, it will take time to upskill and, and introduce these new jobs. But always, I think it is a great opportunity for growth and new jobs to emerge. And also opportunities for the generations to come to grow.
If I, if I may add, and I completely agree with your answer, I'll, I'll give an example. And I don't know if your point, what would we go to? There's a lot of studies, maybe we'll go to three days a week or four days a week with AI. And I, I don't know, it's hard to predict. But I will tell you, you know, the evolution of jobs. We ran a workshop with an organization around the impact of Gen AI. And most employees are nervous when you say, okay, we're going to analyze Gen AI in your organization. And we did an exercise where we had everybody map out everything they do on a big whiteboard with all their tasks with, on the board. From the moment they start the day to the end of the day. Or, and then we asked them to put a smiley face next to tasks they enjoy and a sad face next to tasks they did not enjoy. And there were a lot of sad faces through the course of a day.
God, I'm not sure I should do that. That's a brave, brave encounter there.
And then we took all the sad faces and said, that's where we're going to focus the Gen AI. So again, we need to look at the immense possibility to automate routine tasks, uplift the workforce, have everybody focus on higher value ideas, which is what people enjoy doing for the most part, so.
So I want to turn to each of the speakers to answer a last question. So it's going to be the same question for all of you. And I want, as we leave this room, to think about, what is one trend or one phenomenon when it comes to AI and AI development and education that you think we should focus more on or we should advocate for? So Radha, I'm going to start with you. What's that one thing?
I would say diagnostics and getting not just at the learning, but at potentially learning difficulties like could dyslexia, ADHD? Could the diagnostics of what goes into the system give feedback to the student, to the learner, to the parents on that?
That would revolutionize both learning and preparation of students. Dima?
Well, I would really focus the attention right now to accelerate bridging the computing divide, making sure that everyone has a fair opportunity to learn and use this new technology.
And do you see that bridging divide as being responsibility of individual governments? Or do you see it bigger as this SDG UN level? How do you?
Well, yes, I think it's collective. It's, governments cannot do it alone. And private sector also cannot do it alone. I think, and financial institutions. So I think it's an ecosystem and a multilateral, actually, engagement where everyone should cooperate together to bridge that divide.
Jack?
I will, I'll talk about responsible AI. Right now, again, back to the corporate world, which I know only 2% of companies have a fully institutionalized responsible AI framework. And that has to be embedded into the education. So then when people use AI, they know how to spot bias. They know where the model got that data. They know when to spot incorrect answers. They know if it may be a copyright infringement. So embedding the, the knowledge of responsible AI so humans can understand the model and what the model is doing right and wrong, I think, is paramount.
That's great. Minister?
Thank you. I would say that even beyond AI, our ability to adapt is going to be very crucial in this conversation. So for instance, the students that we have in our schools now, by the time they, they will graduate in a completely different world. So meaning the best thing that we can do is to help them and to teach them how to learn better and how to adapt it to changing circumstances. So, but for us to be able to do that, we also need to transform. We also need to adapt as education systems. So one example I will give you, for instance, ChatGPT helped me write this first part of the answer. So meaning our students are going to also be using all these tools in our classrooms. So meaning that if we are developing assessments as an education systems, also need to be mindful of that and to help our students use these tools better. And also for all of us to be thinking about, how do you assess for this higher order skills for our students that they need? But also make sure that these tools are not things that are to be kept away from the classroom. So but things that are to be adapted and better absorbed in our systems.
Laura?
So I would say two things. I mean, the first one, to pay extreme attention to inclusion in a sense that AI can be a potential tool for broadening the base of those who actually have better opportunities. But if we only focus on the technical aspects, we really stay with the potential that it has for the few that can, you know, that can use it. And the second part, I would say, is a strong attention to disinformation. We are living in the era of access to information, but also access to disinformation. And I think that if we don't find a way of regulating how this incredible tool is used, then that can also have a sort of negative repercussions as we have seen.
That's an incredibly important point to raise. You know, one thing I and many journalists talk about is this idea of media literacy. And what we used to speak about media literacy 10 years ago is completely different now, to be able to discern what is true and what is false, hugely important.